... scheduled city council meeting, if I can ask everybody to please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Associate Pastor Antonio Christie of Fairhope United Methodist Church, and I'm going to ask you to remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Loving Creator, we give you thanks for everyone gathered here tonight. Thank you, God, for all your blessings which have been flowing in on us. Most of all, thank you for this beautiful city that we call home. God, tonight I pray, God, for those you have called to lead, to lead the city. I pray that you will bless them, oh God, with health and with strength, and will withstand the lead in ways that are pleasing unto you. I pray, God, for the agenda that is in front of us tonight. Give us the assurance that whatever we decide tonight, oh God, will be pleasing to you, but also be beneficial to those who work and live in this beloved city of Fairhope. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thanks, Antonio.
Thank you, Reverend Christie. All right. We don't have any additions to tonight's meeting, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of the September the 8th special called Work Session Budget Meeting and the regular city council meeting and work session that were held on September the 13th. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes?
Make a motion where you approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion as second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Thank you, good evening. Just a couple things. The first one is just hopeful that we will present a budget next week that are the next council meeting that will be on that agenda and past. Really excited about, you know, hopefully passing a budget on time and being able to start working on all the projects that we have included. The other thing, want to thank the staff, Hunter and Jessica and everybody involved, the planning staff for the comp plan update meetings or the comp plan meetings, land use meetings that we are currently holding. We started those last week and got a really good turnout between the public meeting and the focus groups. We've probably had about 200 citizens that have been involved, and so I appreciate the council coming out for those and for everybody who's been involved in those, and thank you to the staff. I think we've got some good feedback, and again, that's only the first of the public engagement that we will have through February of '22, so there'll be ample opportunity for people to be involved. The other thing I wanted to let everybody know is if you walk out of the pier right now, you're going to see some new containers out there. They are micro filament containers where people can discard of their fishing line, and those are courtesy of the Mobile Bay watershed program, Troop 47, and the Fairhope High School Marine Life Science Group, and also Berkeley Fishing. So if you're out there and you see those, you'll know what those are, but those are to put your micro filament in or your fishing line so they don't get into the wildlife or the fish and everything that are into the bay unless you have a hook on them and you want to catch a fish. So we just want to make sure we're discarding of those properly, something good for our environment. And also just remind everybody that there is a Ball &amp; Pops concert this Sunday night on The Bluff. Our own Jeremy Morgan will be participating and playing with them, so excited about that concert. I think it's going to be a beautiful weekend again and look forward to being outside with everybody, and also it's homecoming for the Fairhope Pirates, so I hope everybody will come out to the game this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. Next item is public participation for agenda items. If you would like to approach the council to make comments on items five through 29, I'll ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak to the council on non-agenda items, you will be given an opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So I'll open up the floor for public participation. Items five through 29. Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation for those agenda items and move on to council comments. Councilman Martin?
I have nothing.
No comments for me?
Councilman Robinson?
I don't have anything.
I still can't get over Cory's comment.
Yeah, I don't have anything either.
Councilman Boone?
Let me give the appropriate pause here. No, I have nothing.
I made a bunch of comments in the work session for Cory.
Yeah.
Just didn't feel like speaking tonight. Anyway, I don't really have much to comment on other than to thank the staff, the mayor, and the council for all the hard work on the budget, and staff for putting up with all the difficult questions that we've asked, and please know that, you know, we're charged with making sure that we budget and spend wisely, and that's all we're trying to do, you know, and we would, you know, we want to be good stewards of the people's money, so that's why we do it. I'll close council comments, and we'll move on to item five on tonight's agenda, which is the final adoption of an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253. And if anybody ever reads that, our zoning ordinance 1253 is just about every ordinance. That's not a typo.
Yeah, I know it's not.
Like that work session time today, maybe. I don't know. Those of you that were here 15 minutes early would know what I mean. That's a request is on the property of Silver Hill Enterprises to a planned unit development concurrent with annexation into this city of Fairhope. Property is generally located east and west of Highway 181 near the water subdivision in Fairhope, Alabama. The property is to be known as Harvest Green PUD, which was introduced and discussed at the September 13th, 2021 council meeting. Hunter?
Thank you, Council President. The, I will kind of speed through this. This is the second reading of this, and I looked around the room. I don't see too many folks here, a lot of familiar faces. If I fail to include something, I'd be happy to flip back through the slide, but for the sake of being quick, I'll move through this. This is for 300, it's a PUD with conditional annexation for 375 single-family residential lots. This has been split into east and west side, so this is along Highway 181. The lots on the, I do want to mention one lot on the eastern side will be donated to the city for a future fire station. As you can see on the map here, left side is our zoning map where it is outside of the city limits. The right side shows the existing conditions, mostly farmland. The site layout, again, is Harvest Green east and west. The west side is 148, this is, in general, these are larger lots than the east side. These will be, are all provided as required in our PUD. Home plans are provided by TruLand Homes. Just some examples are included within slides. In total, I believe there are 23 home plans, and each of those has multiple alternatives. The connectivity is difficult, was difficult on this side. It's surrounded by wetlands to the north and south. The planning commission did recommend a connection to the south be provided via easement. It is not connected to the water subdivision. There is a piece of land in between, but the waters does have a stubout street provided, so if that connectivity is ever there, there would at least be an easement. On the east side, there are 227 total lots, 28 home plans were provided by Deor Horton and Express by Horton. Those also have alternatives. Just a few of those examples are included on the slide. The connectivity, let's show, go back to this one. As you can see on this slide, there is connectivity, road connectivity to the south and to the east in lots that may be developed in the future. This was an amendment after the buffer was added along the north side of the western Harvest Green West that will provide a screen and buffer. This was added kind of last minute, so we just wanted to make sure that's there.
You said west. You sure that went east?
On the, that is on the north side of this piece, so on the Harvest Green West along the northern.
The road looked like it was east, and go back to what you had. That.
This is east? Okay, I'm sorry, it is the east side then. The would be here.
It's the very top.
Yes. Yes. And there's a better picture, so here, if you can see my mouse. This is a, the connectivity and landscape plans are on the future side. This is more pedestrian connectivity. The red lines are showing the sidewalks as required, and along 181 was a question on how we provided that. There's some wetlands there and some challenges along the highway right of way. So what's shown in blue is coming into the property, but will be a crushed asphalt walkway, mixed-use trail that connects to the sidewalks with intent someone moving from the north to south or south to north can get from point A to point B, but without having to provide bridges across the wetlands. This kind of connects the multi-use trails to open streets or what will be public streets. The green space is shown on the plan. There was a requirement on this site for, I believe, 25% green space. There are 40, over 44 acres, almost 45, much more than was required. And the conditions we did have, a traffic study showed these were voted on by the planning commission and unanimously voted to recommend approval. Nine votes yes, zero nays. We did have the following, the conditions as listed on the slide that was recommended by the, excuse me.
Bless you.
Recommended by the planning commission for approval. We read those last week, so I won't bore you with those details again, but if you need me to answer any questions, I'll be happy to.
Council, questions? Hunter, I've got a couple, and I apologize for not asking these during the public hearing. Just as I look at it more and more, if I go to the east side, you might want to go, yeah, that one will work. If you go to the east side, and I understand that they're very generous with the green space and that they do exceed the green space by a pretty fair margin, but I can't help but look at that upper portion of the Harvest Green East and wonder when we talk about this 1.93 units per acre, you know, that's a very, very dense area. And so first, I guess, and I can't read that fine print, do we, do you know what that is off the top of your head, what the density is there? You know, I guess if you get a large enough pud, you can smear the density over, in this case, we're smearing the density over two sides of a highway, and on, I guess there's calling it a phase one and phase two, but what I almost see is three distinct subdivisions, if you will. They're one, they're one pud, but they almost look like three. And if I was looking at the one at the top right there, and you brought that to me, and I didn't see 25% green space on all the rest, I don't think I'd be too crazy about that. Was that discussed?
Yes, sir. And you're absolutely right, and as you know, the intent of the PUD is to mix some of these things up, so taken into its whole, you do see a good amount of green space, but you know, my comment when we looked at that was shouldn't there be more smaller areas for green space? And it is a little bit challenging with scale, you know, thinking about how big some of these areas are. You know, the response was, there, a park was kind of created here, park area here. The common area or the more facilities generated, there is a pool, there is open area in this area, so, and we do have it here. You know, it's one of those things that we did ask the question, it wasn't, you know, losing a few lots at that point was not in the interest of the development side to provide those smaller areas, but they, you know, and it's hard for us sometimes when they're meaning a requirement to keep pushing.
Well, I agree, but I guess, you know, last thing we need is more regulation, but when I see that, you know, well, it's a pud, so we could, you know, we could approve or deny, but when I see that, I wondered, do we, do we need to further define green space dispersion or density dispersions? Because if you came up with that top part, I would never vote. That's about as cookie cutter as a plan as I've ever seen, not very attractive at all, and dumps a ton of traffic on that highway, in my opinion.
Now, one thing that this plan on screen does not show is some green space and some differences of traffic calming devices that are not your typical speed bumps, things like that, and that does add a little bit to the, and as you know, this is a PUD, we are seeing the preliminary plots, those are actually delivered today, so we'll start reviewing those tomorrow for all four phases. But it does bring up a good point. We've had some conversations recently about what, how to better define green space, and I think there is something we should be looking at to make sure each lot's within a certain distance to some green space, because right now, all it says is it's centrally located. And center, you know, some have taken as geographically centered, some, you know, is more accessible to the most people. So I do think we've got some, are contemplating some things to make that both clear for the development team and easier for us to get a point across.
So what is that density in that Harvest Green East, I'm gonna call it, the upper east side?
If I can read it here, it is on one of the plans, let's see.
It was two something. The one was 148.
It is on, if I do this, there we go. No, that's not, well.
Yeah, that's two points. I'll just, let's see, that's.
So total acres there for scale, it's 110 acres with 227 houses.
Roughly two. Let's call it roughly two, but if you further narrow it down, that upper spot is, I mean, it looks like five.
And I misspoke on this, this is what the number I was trying to look at. The required green space was 15%, and they're providing 25, so.
Correct. Am I the only one that looks at that and thinks that? Does anybody look at that and think that that's beautiful, the upper part? Kevin?
It's in the eye of the beholder.
If you specifically take out that one part, but I mean, you gotta combine it with the rest of it, the rest of the bottom half, you know, it's got plenty of space that they're able to use.
But it's the upper, more patio home style.
Yeah, that is the smaller, smaller homes. And Council President Larry Smith is here with the SC Civil.
Do you have that density there, Larry?
We didn't break it down just for the northern piece of the eastern section. I will, you know, point out that one of the concepts behind the pud is to do something a little different, and I know it is shoving a lot up into the north, but the purpose of that was to put more protection on the more critical areas. As you can see, that white path that's going through there is your actual buffer requirements, and we pulled to give us a very substantial amount of buffer and a lot of green space around the more sensitive, critical areas. And that was the approach we were taking with the pud, is how to, if you look around, all of the green spaces are protecting critical areas, and so we end up with a density that is less than a normal zoning, but yes, it is, you know, distributed among what you're calling the northern and the southern half of the eastern section, but that's because the southern half has all those critical areas. We have a small pocket of critical area on the north, but the majority of it's all on the southern portion of the eastern section. Now, one of your questions earlier was, you know, when you look at the west and the east, they do stand alone as far as their green space requirements per phase and per side of the road. They do have the required green space in each of those phases, and the odd line that you kind of see squiggling through there from phase one to phase two on the eastern side wasn't trying to meet a green space requirement, it was actually from an engineering design. If you look at the sewer and the storm systems, how we had to divide the roads.
I did wonder that.
Yeah, I know, it is a very odd line, but there was actually sewer going each direction off of that center line because of the way we had to run the gravity system to get back to the lift station and be able to clear all the storm pipes. It was purely engineering reasons, not a green space. They do stand alone on their own merit as far as green space requirements.
And I don't believe we allow you to take wetlands as, do we allow you to take wetlands and calculate that as green space?
I don't believe those get to be counted as the.
I don't think they do.
Yeah.
I see Hunter saying, yeah, I don't.
It's a weird target.
You know, livability capacity, it's a preservation area.
Yeah.
Has to be significant areas of leak at least. Well, the reason why I say that is because if you had this vast wetlands area, you had 40 acres of wetlands on a 45-acre tract, and you divide up, you could say, well, okay, we've got 90% green space, but so we're going to put 100 homes on that 10 acres. That's, you know, I think the intent was to not let people do that.
Well, there are some instances, I believe Overland was an example, where it was, density was concentrated in one area, and a lot of area was both floodway, you know, wetlands, and normal green space wasn't provided, so there's some instances where I think that density was too preserved.
There is some. I gave an extreme example. I mean, there's nothing wrong with having an amenity that might be wetlands within, but if you abuse it and you try to get the density super high in the non-wetlands area and you can still say, well, look, no, we provide all this green space when.
But that's not.
Really, you weren't going to use it all.
That's not what we did here. You can see, we actually pulled the wetlands. That's the why we pulled the wetlands and the buffers out of our green space calculations.
I think you're supposed to, yep. Very good.
Okay.
And also understand the alternative, which is to not allow, not annex, and then it's the same, Catch 22, stand in accounting and develop. All right, I'm sorry, council, those are all my questions. I just know that population density is probably the one subject that we may hear from our citizens the most on, and the people get upset on, and if you go to any of the comp plan meetings, it's, you know, slow down.
Yeah.
Reduce density.
Right. Walkability, connectivity.
Quit approving everything that comes before you. That's about it in a nutshell. You have any questions? All right. Lisa, I do not show that we have a.
You do not have a motion or a second.
All right, council, I will entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Was that, do we need to say staff recommendations?
You said, no, oh, go ahead with staff recommendations.
Well, just if you approve with the motion. Yeah, make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
It was already a second, so now you gotta go back.
Yeah. Who made the original motion?
Jimmy Dan.
Jimmy Dan?
Yeah.
He withdraw your first motion?
Withdraw my first motion and make a motion subject to staff recommendations.
There you go.
Okay.
Now we're good.
Second, we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? I'm going to vote yes despite my objections to that one area because I know the alternative to not approve.
No doubt.
All right, Cory, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number six, final adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1639 specifically the 2018 International Code Council, International Building Code, as it relates to storage buildings, which was introduced at the last council meeting. Eric, is that you?
Yes, sir.
You want to come back and give us a quick overview again?
Yes, Mayor, council, what this is, is adopting some clarifying language for code requirements for many storages. As you can see, we're getting a ton of them. This is the language that we're putting in, has been voted on and will be inserted in the next edition of the building code. We're adopting this language early, as have a couple of other municipalities or governmental agencies in the area.
Any questions for Eric?
No, we talked about this.
You know, at one of the, at one of the steering committee, it wasn't the steering committee, but what I'll call a steering committee meeting that we had with the comp plan kickoff last week, there was somebody that's involved with economic development that talked about lowest use of property in the city, and they specifically said storage buildings. And I don't know about y'all, but I'll stick my neck out there again and say, my God, can we build any more storage buildings in this city?
I agree.
I mean, how do we, I mean, we need to put the brakes on storage buildings.
I will say, most of the ones we have are in the unzoned county. We have very relatively few that are actually in the city limits where we can say no.
And it's this, yeah, I know, same thing. It's the same Catch 22.
Yeah.
It's not gotten any easier.
And there's more coming, so.
So with that Senate bill that was passed, that would still prevent us from having any say in things outside of our city limits?
Well, it's.
As it stands now, if we don't come to an agreement with the county?
Well, in the unzoned county, regardless of SB 107, that is a use of a piece of property, which is not, the only way you can control that is to zone it. Now, the county can zone it if the people in that area vote for zoning in that area, but if it's in the unzoned county, regardless of SB 107, it doesn't matter. That's a use allowed by the fact that it's unzoned.
And for the next two years, the good thing about this is it is at our ETJ, so there are some regulations that we can enforce even though it's unzoned county property, so that's a good thing for us.
That is correct. One of the things that we do, I mean, in this, we can't govern the use, we govern the wind speed that this building is designed to. We also require drainage and detention, which might not otherwise be required because that is adding to our overall drainage issue, and there's a lot, generally, a lot of impervious space on these sites. So that is, that does give us some of that control over it.
Well, you're going to know where our border is soon because you just follow the warehouses.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Do we require them to withstand, and I'm seeing Sandy out there who goes, but he's a little further out. Yeah, Barnwell, the Barnwell Landmark Historic, the, can we make them withstand a 600 mile an hour wind?
Sure, if you'd like to pass an ordinance, tell me what you want to do. As it is right now, they're 160 miles an hour, which we did not have any failures of those buildings, good, bad, or otherwise.
There is.
Depending on, and that's part of what we're doing. Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Eric? I think these are, is a step in the right direction. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any staff recommendations with that, Eric? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Lisa, will you please call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item seven is final adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1513, Article III, Board of Advisors, Section 1 of the Fairhope Recreation Board's Bylaws, which was introduced at the September 13th, 2021 city council meeting. I believe this was just kind of tidying up the board, making sure that, you know, people that really never attended the meetings didn't necessarily have to be on the board because they're always invited anyway. What else was on there, Cory?
The community, the community.
Oh, yeah, removing the position in the city that doesn't exist anymore.
Community relations.
That'd be a good idea.
From it.
Okay. All right, I think that was the main thing, so, all right. I'll entertain a motion to, for a final adoption. I'll entertain a motion to, for a final adoption of this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will say that this was agreed upon by the entire Recreation Board, and this was a recommendation from the Recreation Board. That, Clark, will you call the question?
Counsel President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number eight is a resolution that City Council approves and authorizes the application for the fiscal year 2022 airport improvement project funding. This is not committing the city to any funds, just because we are a sponsor of the Airport Authority. The City Council has to take action to authorize their application, which they put in for airport improvements. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and authorize the application.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will say, it's a pretty lengthy resolution, if you want to read it in your book. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number nine is a resolution that City Council approves the selection of Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to perform architectural engineering design services for the replacement of the existing HVAC unit for council chambers and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not to exceed limit with this firm. This is what Mr. Johnson had briefed us on quite a bit in the work session. Right, Richard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion as such to approve the selection of...
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. And Richard, I guess I just, I want to ask this last question on this. Because we think the cost is going to exceed fifty thousand, that's why we have to have an architect and engineering services as opposed to just going out and hiring the air conditioning company. I know you said that there's some structural issues, but I didn't see any structural work defined in the photos or video. I mean, is there structural modifications to the building that are necessary, other than maybe putting a rack on the roof?
Potentially, yes. I mean, I know one of the things, when we got some pro bono work out of the architects and the mechanical engineer that's kind of decided to put together kind of the scope of work, you know, one, units on the roof have to be ten foot away from the edge of the roof, and right now, the current one is not. And again, if we do have to, if we're going with a package unit, we are looking at roof penetrations to tie the ductwork into the existing ductwork, and that is structural by definition, as well as looking at some of the issues on the roof and that location that we need while we're there to fix. So, and the biggest thing is, is having that mechanical engineer who does HVAC is that is properly sizing and designing the unit for the purpose because we, you know, we're definitely killing a nap with a shotgun right now with the system that we have.
I'm sure we don't just need a thermostat.
And again...
And you said it was an on-off issue. I was like, it's cold in here.
And counsel, I reckon the one good news is, is once we come back to you and with the not to exceed price for the design services, you know, that's one of those, that's one of those designs that we can get completed, and then you guys can make the decision that, hey, if we want to continue to roll the dice and get as much life out of this one as we can, but then when we finally get to that point, we're ready to go to bid, as opposed to then having to go through the process of select engineer, getting the not to exceed, getting the design done and everything else. So the good news is, is that our options will be open when we get to the point when we have the new system sized and designed.
To that point, if we put a Band-Aid on it, how many, how much money would you say we've spent recently on this system? Are we spending a ton of money to keep it running?
Off and on, yeah. This, it's, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I can get them from, you know...
If we were in here sweating to death, it'd be really, it's like bam, slam the gavel and pass it, but, I mean, for the last several meetings, it's been ice cold in here.
Yes, sir, and that's my fear. I don't, the scary scenario is that it kicks the bucket next May and it takes us ninety days to get it replaced. That's the scary part. So at least we'll want to be proactive and have at least on the shelf to pull the trigger.
Will that engineer, the mechanical engineer, maybe if there are options, will he give us that opinion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
All right, Lisa, am I looking for a motion?
You have a motion and a second.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second. Does anybody else have any questions? Any more discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number ten is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Vulcan Engineering to perform professional engineering and environmental services for the ADM NPDES wastewater discharge permit for the required D I Z test for the sewer department with an estimated amount of forty-five thousand three hundred and sixty dollars based on the attached current hourly rate schedule and estimated analytical cost. And can we just get another couple of minutes on that, if you don't mind? We didn't get, we didn't get to it on the agenda meeting, so...
So this is, so this is basically for our permit renewal in the D I Z discharge information zone, it's a test we have to do every five years to get the new permit. They go out basically with a barge, they test four hundred feet round area and eight hundred feet out, do sixteen different sites, kind of like a soil sample, but this is in the bay, the test if we have any impact to the bay. D O and P H also, there's some, but mainly this is, the test itself is thirty-three thousand, so...
Right.
The fee is mainly the test.
Yeah, there's a good breakdown, if you look in your package there, counsel, as to how it adds up to the forty-five thousand three sixty and all, looks to be pretty reasonable.
So the permit is up in twenty-three in the January, but the way the state does it, you have to have it turned in six months early, so you're looking at the end of June. And the D I Z test is a seasonal thing. We've done them in October every year, so that's why it's come up now. And then the assist with Vulcan doing the permit, being able to talk to the state and there's any issues or changes to our permit on the limits, you know, for the next five years.
Questions? Okay. When hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item eleven is a resolution. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Neil Schaefer to perform professional engineering design services for a corridor study, survey, design, and project letting for the project, and you can read all those letters and numbers, for ADA compliance at Southland Subdivision, for the Public Works Department with a not to exceed amount of seventy-four thousand sixty-six dollars. Richard?
Yes, sir. As you know, we've had some pretty detailed conversation about this. Y'all, a few meetings back, approved the mayor's to negotiate a not to exceed. This is the DOJ federal highway compliance issue that we're working to solve, and this is the engineering kind of part of our checklist for compliance, and it's for you for approval.
Questions, counsel?
So this is a grant, correct?
No, sir.
This is money from the federal government, and we have to match it?
No, sir.
This is not that one?
This is the federal government saying, we have a problem, we have to fix.
Got you.
This is just the engineering portion.
This is just the engineering portion.
It's just one of the...
But this money is going only towards the engineering, it's not the four hundred thousand dollars that it costs to fix it?
No, sir. This is to get us to that point.
To get us to the four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Seventy-four thousand dollars. That's a lot. You know, dare I say it, I don't think we have a choice in this one.
No. No, this is no choice.
I don't think we have a choice. I just hope Neil Schaefer gave us a good deal.
Yeah.
Look at you engineers out there. Y'all need to throw a dart at them, throw one. Now, hopefully, hopefully, we're getting, you know, getting our money's worth, so I will, I will entertain a motion. I think we do need to approve these funds. I highly recommend...
Sir.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, counsel. Motion carries. Item number twelve is a resolution. The City Council approves the selection of Sawgrass Consulting for the Natural Resources and Conservation Service grants for the Emergency Watershed Protection Project, number three, in North Summit, also known as the Big Mouth Gully, for professional survey and engineering services and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute a contract with a total cost of sixty-six thousand dollars based on estimates. Richard?
Yes, sir, and this is the last of the series. This is kind of the last of Sally. This was the NRCS grants that we received, and this is the final engineering that you see on there. This is a already funded project, up to four hundred thousand dollars. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match, as well as that we do get back seven and a half percent on total construction, funded construction cost towards the engineering, which is about half that amount, so...
We get back how many percent?
They give you seven and a half percent of the amount funded for construction toward your project management. They, you know, and generally, engineering runs fifteen to eighteen percent of a project, and they give you roughly half of that, so...
So we can expect to get maybe half of this back?
Yes, sir. I think the budget narrative's in your packet. You can see where we calculate what that engineering reimbursement would be.
Okay. Yeah, I see it. We expect thirty thousand three hundred. A little bit less than half, but...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, counsel? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item thirteen is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one to bid number forty-one dash nineteen improvements to four electric substations for the capital improvement plan to upgrade four substations at Twin Beach, Nichols, Morphe, and Volanta with an increased cost in an amount of one hundred thousand three hundred dollars and to award the change order to Aubrey Silvy Enterprises with a con, SS contact, I think that means contract time, being increased by two hundred and seventy calendar days. Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Legal due, Mr. Clark, Mayor, counsel. How may I shed some light on lucky agenda item thirteen?
So this, let's go through, so I want to go through some of this change order.
Absolutely.
They have a demobilization and remobilization of ten thousand dollars. Was that not in the original?
Well, we planned on those boys being here and working, and since the Morphe fiasco of finding a site...
So this is because they came and set up and then had to leave and then come back? This is not just a one-time and a...
That is just a...
Basically, because they do it twice.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that answers that.
Yes.
And I would guess that most all of these are due to the fact that we weren't ready for them to complete that work.
That's exactly right.
If you go down that laundry list of charges...
Yes, you'll see that prices have increased, materials, and of course, with the change in the design of Morphe, we also had to, you'll see some other materials in there that are added as part of that. It actually ends up being a hundred thousand, I know, it was a hundred and seventeen, but that was because we had a actual decrease with the change of the A-frame, H-frame structure. And then they did a couple of other things that, as you can see, I don't know if you got that list in front of you, that they did at Twin Beach and other places, that kind of took some money from that, but then all the rest of this is in there, and I got it broke down if you need it. You know, we've also got the transformer that has to be moved to the site. So the crane has went up, crane costs and transportation for that. Gravel costs has went up, and then there's some conduit and some cable that they are having to furnish.
Right. No, that makes sense, and I mean, it really does. We know that everything's gone up, that just that mobilization cost, that makes sense if they're doing it twice. I wasn't sure if they were coming, setting it up, leaving, or once or twice.
We tried our best to keep them here on site, but it just didn't pan out.
They could have stayed at your house.
I would love to have them. They're some good guys. I can't speak their language, but I would try.
Yeah, I thought we was going to keep them. We talked about that.
Yeah, we definitely tried.
We had a place for them, so...
So we're extending that by two hundred and seventy days, right?
Yeah, we are way...
Nine, nine months.
Yeah, that's how far my...
So what does that put us out into?
They're going to come back, we're not in October yet, next month, by the end of the month. They should be back ready and have that, hopefully, if all goes well with the dirt work in the site, they should be, I'm not sure how many months it'll take them, but they're going to work hard.
Or late next summer, maybe? And that would be pretty much everything?
Probably be before that. Yeah, I would think about April, it should be.
A lot of it's completed on later. And right now, with the ground weather section, there's going to be a lot of...
Yeah, they're doing a great job, yeah.
How close will that bring us to completing all those substations?
We'll be done with the substations. We've got the forty-six twelve work, that's the next big project, getting that contracted out.
I know the peak load used to be based on winter, but where we live, it's based on summer, so just cross your fingers, hopefully, we'll make it through without any...
No, summer ain't, we're still winter peak, so, yeah, it's still wintertime, we're going to be careful. If it don't get too cold, we might be all right.
Okay.
We're going to be all right anyway.
Was that one or two? Somebody called that with me. All right, we'll entertain a motion to allow the mayor to authorize the, I mean, we'll authorize her to execute change order number one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number fourteen is a resolution to award the bid to Red Pest Solutions for Pest Control twenty-twenty-one for the city of Farrel with a total bid proposal not to exceed twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and four cents. Jimmy, that number look good to you?
Looks good to me, make a motion.
What'd the Fed do today?
I don't know.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the bid for pest control. All of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item fifteen is a resolution to award the bid to Eric Lazary Construction for the Pecan Building Phase One East Wing Office remodel for the city of Farrel with a total bid proposal not to exceed two hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. I see this is in the draft budget. Richard, how close is that to the number, I mean, that we were originally thinking to renovate that?
Just to kind of give you specifics, is, this involves thirty-six hundred square feet of finished space, which basically entails flooring, ceiling, light fixtures, the nineteen-seventies paneling on the walls that are being retained coming down and sheet rock going back up and finished facilities. This is, will contain the Symbol Clinic, and they did have some requirements, they had to have three exam rooms, a laboratory that has cabinetry in it, as well as kitchen type sink, as well as provider's office reception area, as well as waiting room. We also have been able to reuse a large six hundred square foot room that will become a general meeting train room for the city, as well as the lobby will get rehabbed in this, so everything from the lobby to the, to the east is being redone. Originally, when we looked at these numbers a year ago, we thought we should have been around about sixty dollars a square foot, this works out to be right at eighty dollars a square foot, which is not necessarily out of the realm based upon inflation, and when you look at the bids, we had two of them within three thousand dollars of each other, and the third one was within ten percent, so that gives me a high confidence that that's the price.
Very good summary. All right. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid for the construction project.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item number sixteen is a resolution to award bid to John G. Walton Construction Company for the NRCS dash EWP, might as well read it all, DSR fifty-one oh six, project number one at Quail Creek for the city of Farrel with a total bid proposal not to exceed three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and seventy-three cents. Richard, can you touch on that one, Jim?
Yes, sir, this was the, one of the NRCS funded projects, when they originally gave us the budget, we knew it was under, they said we could go back and ask for more money, we did, part of that negotiation, they got a little hung up on the Goth Cart Bridge crossing there, and one of the things that they did ineligible was that and everything downstream, but they did bring in more money into it to fund the portion of work which goes from Quail Creek Drive to the Goth Cart, so you see that broken out in a little handwritten note that I provided for our treasurer, so in this case, the grant's going to provide us a reimbursement of, for construction of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, as well as nineteen thousand dollars toward the cost of the engineering, and you can see the city's portion with the cart path improvements and everything downstream add a cost a hundred percent on us at a hundred and forty-six thousand, three fifty-six, twenty-six. Again, it's a problem that has to be fixed, I think the good news here, we've got a entity that's given us nearly two hundred and ten thousand dollars toward the fix, and is our recommendation to move forward with the project.
Questions, counsel?
Yeah, does a private, do the private citizens apply, or does the city apply for this grant?
The cool thing is, the city has to be the applicant, but NRCS is the only money out there that doesn't get hung up on public, private, or anything, they're watershed problems. So, for example, you know, like on the next one that you just did the engineering on that will be coming hopefully forward pretty quickly on Summit, that's really addressing a significant private property issue that's affecting five very nice homes.
Yep.
And that's the one federal dollars that doesn't get hung up on private-public, it's watershed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid to John G. Walton Construction Company.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or any further questions? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item seventeen is a small one, to award the bid to Alon Boring for Phase Two Project Two wastewater collection and transmission system for the sewer department with a total bid proposal not to exceed one million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. We're better here by that one.
Our engineer is here as well, he can speak. This is the force main from Ingleside on Farrelp Avenue to Bishop. This, we've talked about, I don't, you know, I don't know how many times in the meeting to get this out on the street, we finally got it on the street for bid, and that's the numbers. That's directional bore sixteen inch, Andy can go into detail on what's going to be involved, but it will take everything north of Farrelp Avenue off of the lift station that we call Dog House, that's, it's already met capacity a long time ago, so anyway.
It'll take everything, I'm sorry, north of what?
North of Farrelp Avenue.
North of Farrelp Avenue off of that lift station?
Yes, sir.
And does it provide for another, a brand new lift station? Andy?
No, sir.
Or is it going to be something that doesn't require a lift station, will it be gravity-fed to the plant, or what?
No, this is the force main, it's going to be taking flow from intermediate school and from Dog House. Dog House is going to tie into the previous force main that's put in, we're going to have some redundancy at Ingleside, where if we need to send flow to gravity, we can send it to gravity, if we need to send it to force main, we can send it to force main. There's an extensive amount of work that still needs to be done outside of this particular project, going in both directions, north and south.
But it'll prevent overflows there and issues that we've been having at the Dog House for ever, as long as I've been on the council, anyway. Questions, counsel? So, it shows project budgeted, and it's been showing in FY twenty-twenty-two on some of these, was this budgeted in the twenty-twenty-one budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're not, it's not rolling over, then?
It's rolling.
It's rolling over.
That's included in that fifteen million dollar total water source, it's rolled.
Okay. But it was already budgeted this year?
It was budgeted this year, but we know we won't expense it until next year, so we rolled it over.
Sure, sure, okay. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid to Alon Boring.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I guess, Andy, you're happy, and you, you're comfortable with everything, I mean, that's, you're our expert on this.
I am, got confidence in the contractor, the one piece that's going to be the outlier is materials, we're going to need to order materials as quickly as we possibly can, there's a long lead time on some of those items, it may be several months, so the plan is to get contractor under contract, order materials, we'll start times as soon as all the materials are in place, because we're going to have to be taking some critical pieces out of service to do some of this work, and we can't start it without having all the pieces to do it.
Have a motion and a second, Lisa. All right, any more questions? Hearing none, all of us in favor of awarding the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item eighteen is a resolution to award bid tomorrow, Water Technologies for refurbishment of Wells Number Two and Nine for the water department with a total bid proposal not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
And that was a previous, I think, two meetings ago, where you authorized the mayor to negotiate, we only had one bidder, the original bid came in, I believe, at two forty, and the mayor and Curtis Cooper did an excellent job negotiating, and if you want more detail on what's going to be involved, Curtis can answer that, but they did a great job and got the price down to within five thousand, the original budget, which was a budget number that was, what, two years old, so they did a great job.
That's what I'm talking about, right there, mayor. Thank you, good job on that. So, I like to hear those stories. All right, yeah, I won't belabor you with that, I was going to ask a question, but I will, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid tomorrow, Water Technologies.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item nineteen is a resolution, the city of Farrel hope to approve the procurement of six iPad Pros and six Pelican Black Diplomat folios for the building department from First Net built with AT&amp;T. This is a sole source service through AT&amp;T, and the iPad Pros must be compatible with our existing system, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama with an estimated cost for the first year of ten thousand, four hundred dollars and twenty-two cents. I'll go ahead and get a motion and a second out there, I'm going to ask a question, so I'll entertain a motion to approve purchase.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Jeff? Or Joe? Or Eric? Okay, Eric's the one. The estimated cost for the first year is ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars, what is it after that? Is this a, it doesn't seem like it'd be much of a recurring cost on that.
The recurring cost will be the first net service, which is thirty dollars a month per unit.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I was hoping you'd say, all right. Any other questions? That's a, sounds like a pretty fancy Pelican Black Diplomat Folio.
It's a rugged case, the guys are taking it under the pillow.
Yeah, no, that's something I might use.
It's like a secret mission, almost.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, we have a motion and a second, any other questions, counsel? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion for the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay? All right, motion carries. Item twenty is a resolution that the mayor is hereby authorized to submit an engagement for artistic services to Leonard Houston to perform sixteen two-hour outdoor concerts at the Farrel Pier. The rate for Mr. Houston's services shall be two hundred dollars per concert, the concert times are to be coordinated between the city and Mr. Houston based on weather and other potential conflicting events at the municipal pier area. Per Councilman Martin's questions, a few weeks ago, Mr. Houston had been told that he needed permission to perform on public property, that's not allowed, we did not have a franchise agreement, we had a lot of citizens that got upset by that, but, you know, we have to treat everybody fairly, and so if we, we make people have a franchise agreement to use the public property for one part of town, or especially down at the pier, it's , there's a lot of people that try to set up down there, put up, you know, vending businesses or any number of things, and we simply don't allow it, so in keeping with the law, I think we did, we even went one step further and said, not only do we want him to play, we're going to pay him to play, so, because we think there's a lot of demand, so.
Yeah.
We're going to engage in this contract to pay him for his services, so no franchise agreement is needed, he'll be perfectly legal, and it's a small expense, we also pay, we subsidize Baldwin Pops for their concerts, this is something that has been done, so hopefully, the people will get some enjoyment out of providing this entertainment down at that, that area. Mr. Martin, Councilman Martin, you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just, it was the right thing to do, I'm happy that Mr. Houston and the city were able to solve this, and now the public can go back to ease with coming to the pier and watching him play. Once again, I mean, you know, he did a great service for us at a time when people really needed to hear music, when the pandemic was at its worst, and, and he decided to give his services and express his gifts for really no charge at that point, and I think what happened when he started tipping and people started tipping, I think it got in the way of what his heart was intended for, so this resolves that, and I think everybody's happy, happy medium, and I'm happy to see him back.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, authorize the mayor to submit an engagement letter.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments? Hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item twenty-one is a resolution, the city of Farrelp authorizes submission of a grant application to a DECA request in an FY twenty-twenty-two RTP grant and authorizes the mayor to sign the required grant application documents on behalf of the city. Mayor, who do you have to explain that application?
Jessica's not here because she, she was not able to be here this evening, but I can, I can talk about it.
Okay, sure.
So, record, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the same as we actually submitted last year, this recreational trails grant to a DECA, we have applied for funds through Go Mesa also for the trails grant, we have talked to our grant consultant, they do not see any problem with us submitting for, to both grants for this project, I'm determined to find some sort of grant that will pay for trails through the Triangle property and to help us enhance that park, so this is our, you know, another attempt to do that.
And if I may piggyback on what you said, mayor, this would be the, what I see in the resolution specifically for the northern part.
Correct.
Of the Triangle property, that, that property north of Veterans, it goes up to, to Fly Creek.
That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize the submission of the grant application.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay? Motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item twenty-two is a resolution, the city of Farrelp hereby authorizes the mayor to extend the contract between the city of Farrelp and Mobile Infirmary Association doing busy business as I help the community for three months, and to sign the necessary paperwork to terminate the contract after the extension expires. Mayor, you want to explain that, or?
We, so, most, you know, you have approved us with a contract with Mobile Infirmary to do the wellness program for our employees, we currently were going to, that contract was set to expire September thirtieth, we have about fifty-five employees participating in through individual coaching or through the app that they provide for iHealthy, so we would like to continue that for the next three months while we explore whether we're going to continue with the infirmary, or we're going to transfer to the Symbol Clinic for that wellness portion for the employees, so this will give us that three-month window and will allow our employees to continue our wellness program.
Any questions, counsel? Not, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to extend the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion?
Bless you, thank you. Aye.
Say aye. Aye. All of us opposed, please say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item number twenty-three is a resolution, the city of Farrelp hereby amends the budget for FY twenty-twenty to twenty-one and authorizes the city treasurer to transfer seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Capital Projects Fund specifically designated as infrastructure improvement special account funds, in this infrastructure improvement, it's a mouthful, special accounts are to be used only for improvements to the city streets, sidewalks, parks, and buildings as approved by a vote of the city council, in other words, we're going to transfer the money, but the mayor, if you make any recommendations, we'll come back to the council for approval as to what exactly we're going to be spending the money on.
Now, I want to give you a sample of this kind of thing that happens. So, on the item that y'all approved a few minutes ago, number sixteen, that is for the golf course drainage, that was originally a ninety-one thousand dollar project, it went out for bid, it came back, so you're seeing it's at two ninety-three. To have money in that fund for those kind of oops, it happened to be, we're in the middle of budget, and we were able, we're finagling money to cover that project, but to be able to have that money in there, when you have a grant come upon you for infrastructure, you'll have that money set aside, so that's what's helpful, and y'all have done it in the past, that was part of the question about the sales tax money, a quarter of that went into the fund to build that reserve up, and it had a hefty reserve, and we've just used it, and this will help start building that fund back up.
All right, any questions for Kim? Okay, not, I'll entertain a motion to amend the budget and allow the treasurer to transfer the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the said fund.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right, thank you, counsel, motion carries. Item twenty-four is a resolution that the mayor is hereby authorized to engage and enter into a memorandum of understanding with St. Michael Catholic High School regarding a proposed fifteen-foot-wide utility easement along the southern boundary of its property, and that the mayor is authorized to execute a contract with a survey company for survey services related to the proposed utility easement. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All right, who's going to brief us on that one?
Jason can, or I can, this is basically an easement that is located off of property off one eighty-one to St. Michael's, it was a, it was a utility easement before, but when the property sold, it was, it was not recorded back as a utility easement, and we need access to that to actually upgrade the lift station at St. Michael's to be able to hook in another lift station from Harvest Green on one eighty-one, so it's actually going to help us do some upgrades in that area to meet the demand of the growth that we're seeing.
And you don't anticipate any cost?
We do not, no, sir.
Okay.
Not for the easement, no, sir, just the survey that we have to do.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? I believe we have a motion and a second.
Yes, you do.
All of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay? All right. Item twenty-six.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I was trying to see if he was paying attention. Skipped him on purpose. Item twenty-five is a site plan extension request of Henry Wise, the owner of Wise Living Real Estate, and Larry Smith of SE Civil Engineering Surveying, requesting a second one hundred and eighty-day extension of the site plan approval that was granted for the property located at three sixty-nine South Mobile Street, known as the Pier Street Marketplace, the site plan was approved on May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, the new extension of approval will begin on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, and expire on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Hunter, please.
Thank you, Council President, as, as you may or may not know, the zoning ordinance allows a site plan to be given an extension in one hundred and eighty-day increments, so it's very explicit in that. in one hundred and eighty-day increments, so it's very explicit in that. There's no limit on the number of extensions. So, this is, this is up to the.
What's the staff's opinion of this request?
You know, staff doesn't like extensions. We like taking things off our list. I think it's reasonable in this time and economic, you know, challenge.
I would think with COVID shutdowns and not being able to get supplies and materials, you're waiting for a better time. I mean, just take a look at, take a look at the barbecue place. They started on that. I mean, they just kind of stopped. Ben's.
Oh, well, that never happened.
And then it stopped due to the pandemic and I think there's another one up there on the hill that started and stopped due to that. So, I don't think that this is anything new.
Yeah, when I say staff, that's selfish. We know we can't, you know, control everything. We, we understand there's, there's other, you know, things outside of our world, but...
Does a developer and engineer think that that would be all that's needed?
Another layer, you're too controversial. He's going to present a store project or a condominium development or something. I'll answer any questions if you.
Do you think you'll need another extension?
I don't think so. I mean, I think I'm in good shape. It's just, you know, who would want to start something in this time, you know, the Delta variant? What's next? I mean, there's three great restaurants closed down at Farhope due to this stuff. Texel Urban is gone, Arbista is gone. I got hired to represent Market by the Bay. They've been there fifteen and a half years and now he just shut the door.
He did?
Yeah. I put it for sale. I mean, you know, three great places around here. I just, it's a supply chain issue and, you know, I'm a young man. I'm not as old as you, Jack. I should be waiting to build that. It's my primary residence, so I want to get it right. You know, it's going to have a little general store on the bottom. This thing's been approved. It's a, it's a simple deal. Appreciate your patience and your consideration.
Appreciate your patience, too, being number twenty-five on tonight's agenda.
If Mr. Martin votes real quick, like, A, B, no.
I just, I just happen to know. I happen to know his level of patience. That's why I intentionally skipped over and tried to get a reaction out every once in a while ago. I don't know that he noticed. All right, I'll entertain a motion to grant the extension request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number twenty-six are recreation board appointments. We made some new appointments to this board recently and the recreation board needs to make sure that these terms were staggered, so they just want to get this documented and get these board members appointed according to the correct time at which their term would end. And so, the nominees for these staggered terms, I'll just list these in order of the year, would be appointments of Bob Keiser, Michelle Smith, and Derek Thomas for a term ending September twenty-twenty-two, Kathy Hudson and Charlie Langham for a term ending September twenty-twenty-three, Van Salz and Hayden Giddings for a term ending September twenty-twenty-four, Maurice Morissette for a term ending September twenty-twenty-five, and Charlie Williamson for a term ending November twenty-twenty-five. So, I will entertain a motion to make those appointments with those staggered terms.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item twenty-seven is a request of Casey Williams, president and CEO of the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce, requesting permission to use the public sidewalk space for lemonade day sponsored and conducted by the Chamber on November the sixth, twenty-twenty-one, from nine AM to three PM. There are over one hundred and sixty children registered to participate across the eastern shore and they are anticipating the lemonade stands will be set up throughout downtown Farhope and many other areas of Farhope. So, that's a Saturday? I think so. I believe that's a Saturday.
The twenty-sixth, yeah.
And
This is going to be cool.
Nine AM to three PM, when they say they want to use public sidewalk spaces, is this granting full use of every sidewalk, every public sidewalk in our municipality?
It's not. I think they have about a hundred and thirty participants, last I heard, along the eastern shore. And so, what they have charged the, the people who want to have the lemonade stand with is going and visiting with the businesses that they want to have their lemonade stand in front of and coordinating that with them. So it won't be every, it's all along the eastern shore, so it's not just here in Farhope. And they have to coordinate that with the individual businesses.
So, all the kids are not coming to?
All the kids are not coming to Farhope.
It'll be a specific number coming to Farhope out of the one-sixty.
Correct. And they will be, and they'll be, again, they've had to coordinate that with, that's part of their whole business plan.
Yeah, I love it.
Coordinating with the businesses, finding location, all the logistics.
Yeah. We have, we have certain public sidewalks that we don't
That's correct.
allow the use of, so should we put that caveat in there? I mean, there's a few parks.
They got to get a permit, by the way.
They had, that's what they're on the council agenda for.
That's right.
Yes, to get permission to do that.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to say, but, but, you know, if you, you know, if you allow them everywhere, I know that there's a few places that it's, that it's not allowed in the city. For instance, you can't get a franchise agreement anywhere, you know, just everywhere in the city. There's some keepout zones, so. Is there anything like that you can think of, Marcus?
Specifically, somebody who uses the Christmas tree in the corner?
They have not asked about that. Right, it's supposed to be in front of businesses because they partner with that business and, like I said.
Yeah, that's true. Is there any, so there's no other city function that that would interfere with that need to be carved out?
Not that I'm aware of. It's Veterans Day Parade that weekend, yeah. But we don't utilize the sidewalks.
Right.
I mean, people are standing on the sidewalks, but it's for a limited amount of time, about an hour from, what, ten to eleven? And it's not on the sidewalks.
Paige, you don't see any issue with that, with the Veterans Day Parade going on that day, right? I mean, I know that lasts. An hour, yeah.
I think it's great.
They may sell more lemonade, though, during the Veterans Day Parade.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to grant the request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of granting the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-eight is a request of Cameron Ellis with CGE Productions for Living Autism U.S., requesting permission to close DeLamar Avenue on November the seventh for their white linen night and evening in Versailles on DeLamar, fundraising with all the profits dedicated to Autism Society of Alabama, Epilepsy Foundation, and Living Autism. The, I'm not sure what that word's supposed to be.
Court.
Court. What?
The court is to assemble.
Court, okay. This is a French. Seven, what?
This is a French, uh, deal.
Okay. Just to assemble at seven PM with dinner to begin at eight PM. All right, we have an application. Chief, do you see any reason to deny this application? I mean, they're paying for the use of the streets like a nonprofit would anyway, right? And they've gone through the proper measures. I guess they don't need an alcohol beverage license that night? No? You know, chief, they, they did not request that? I didn't know if they were serving. They are requesting that?
I didn't see. Beverage.
I think they might, you might want to let them know that they probably need to come back with that, have proper paperwork for that. I don't, I don't see that in here. Am I missing that somewhere?
If it's a nonprofit, they're, it just goes through the ABC Board and then they let us know that they're serving it, won't come back to the council.
Yeah, I thought.
But you do have to authorize.